Okay, I think we're good, and I hope I don't have to restate what I just said. And so, um, so we're here today, um, to move this, um, initiative forward. And really, um, want to take this opportunity to, to thank the Hospital Volunteer Association. We see some past presidents who were here, um, joining us as well. We know it's Easter Monday, and so we've, we've met, uh, with, uh, a good group of you, uh, prior to, to, to today. So we know the type of support that, that, um, this is receiving from the association. I'd like to also read a, um, email I received this morning from, I think it's an important, um, testimony from one of your charter presidents, uh, Ms. Margaret Jones. And I'll just read, that's very brief. Dear Senator Rodriguez, I very much would like to see the GMHVA have a non-voting member on the Board of GMH. I believe would be helpful to both parties, a way to share information in regards to making our hospital a better place. I was GMHVA's second president and sat in all the board meetings at the time. I do not know when this practice was discontinued. Please excuse me for not being there. Adios en half a day, Margaret Jones. And so we did meet with, um, Mrs. Jones as well, a few days ago, and, um, she did indicate that in the past, um, probably forty-seven years ago, that, uh, a member from the Hospital Association did sit as a, you know, I don't know if she said it was ex officio, but as a, as a participating member, however, that discontinued. So what we're doing here, it's setting it in statute that, um, now you do have a seat on that table. All right? So, Mrs. Cruz?
Good morning, Senators. My name's Jenny Cruz. I'm currently the acting president and, uh, also the vice president of the GMHVA Association. And first of all, Senator Rodriguez, uh, thank you for your foresight and for introducing the legislation to add GMHVA president as an ex officio member of the Board of Trustees. The association is very grateful. This is a long time coming, as you heard in recent meetings, with you and our past presidents. Uh, you've continued to honor our members during our Volunteer Week events for several years now, and the volunteers are indebted to your support and show of support. Over the years, our members have devoted thousands of hours to help the organization's mission to help the hospital. We do that with our hundred-and-sixty-plus members. Raising funds to help the hospital's equipment and services needs is what we've done for nearly fifty years, and the gift shop is an example of our dedication in raising funds dearly. The hospital's staff and visitors depend on us to keep it operational. June Perez is our GMHVA liaison, and she's always extended an invitation for us to attend the board meeting, uh, to share our plans, uh, with the board. This bill is a great opportunity for our president to sit on the board and to have a better awareness of the hospital's needs. This will drive her leadership role and direction to the association. History shows that our association has created a good relationship with the staff and management of the hospital. We're a nurturing group of members who care deeply for the patients and the services the hospital needs. Thank you for considering GMHVA as a, uh, actually our president, uh, to be a member of the Board of Trustees, and we look forward to a very healthy, uh, relationship with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cruz. Senator, if you have any comments or questions? If not, I want to thank you very much. I know your testimony represents the, uh, membership, and I want to thank you and thank those who've made time to be here this morning, uh, for, for being here, and thank you again for your service in, um, providing the much-needed support and assistance to our hospital. So just want to say, God bless, thank you. We'll now move on to, um, the next item on the agenda, which is Bill two ninety-nine, an act to include foster children in the Governor of Guam Group Health Insurance Contract. Um, we have to testify this morning, um, Ms. Linda Rodriguez, um, Ms. Jim Gillen, Senator Santos, and Jeff Larson, and Mr. Gary, he's like, uh, Gray. Please, he can join us up here in front, please. Okay, that's, that's fine, thank you. Thank you. Um, Senator Sinekles, to go ahead and, um, give a brief, um, synopsis of the bill, Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to, um, some of our insurance stakeholders in public health for joining us here this morning. Um, Bill two ninety-nine dash three-two is a, an act to include foster children in the Governor of Guam Health Insurance Contract, uh, prospectively. So that's for the future, um, health insurance negotiations that are going to take place with the Government of Guam. Right now, in the current health insurance, uh, platform, we cover our active Governor of Guam employees and our retirees, but, um, what we don't cover is, um, all of the children who are under the care of the people of Guam. Whenever a foster child is under, um, the care of the people of Guam, they go under Medicaid or MIP, and that's it. And that limits their, um, their access to services. They are able to get, go to public health, which is fine. Um, there's a lot of professionals there who are able to help them. They are able to go to certain providers who do accept Medicaid, but that list is very limited. By including them under the Governor of Guam Health Insurance Plan, we'll be able to open them up to everybody that all of our Government of Guam employees are able to go to, or everybody that all of our retirees are able to go to. So our foster children will be able to have an elevated standard of care, uh, comparable to all of our other, um, Government of Guam employees and retirees and their dependents. Um, there's some reasons why we want to move this action forward. One, of course, is the, um, the very obvious one, and that is that whenever we have children who are under the care of the people of Guam, uh, we were all raised here on this island to understand that caring for our children, especially when, when they don't have parents, um, that's something that we all take to heart, and we will bend over backwards and do whatever we can to make sure that the child is taken care of as much as possible. And so this bill, um, by opening up more options for them to be covered under the Governor of Guam Health Insurance Plan, is a reflection of that, of those values that we were raised with. It's a reflection of that commitment that we make to our children, and, uh, it's a reflection of our government's willingness to undertake that and to make that available for all those little ones who, um, who are going through so much already having been, um, um, go, um, put into the foster child program. Um, some of the other things that, that have come up with, uh, with respect to this bill is, um, the fact that, uh, our Medicaid numbers, uh, show that in twenty, I believe, and I'm, I'll let Director Gillen, uh, expound on this, but in twenty nineteen, I understand that, uh, the Affordable Care Act, um, money, uh, may, may, may not be there anymore, and that's, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty million right now that we currently draw down from, for Medicaid to help subsidize our Medicaid expenses. And right now, those Medicaid expenses are at around maybe sixty-six million dollars a year, um, and that includes, um, money from the Affordable Care Act, the Children's Health Insurance Plan, and the Medicaid reimbursements that we currently get. When you take out the Affordable Care Act money, uh, that leaves only the Medicaid and the Children's Health Insurance money, and that's less than the sixty-six million that we spent last year. So as we come, um, closer to the year twenty nineteen, we're going to need to figure out how the local government and our local people are going to be able to make up for that loss in, uh, Affordable Care Act money. And so the sooner we can start transitioning members of our community who are on Medicaid onto a local funding source in a way that we're able to manage locally, the sooner we'll be able to begin bringing this plane into a soft landing rather than a really hard landing come twenty nineteen. So, um, this is a start in that direction. We, we only have eighty-six kids who are in the foster care program. In twenty thirteen, the, um, amount to cover these eighty-six kids was a hundred-and-three-thousand dollars, and, uh, we have eleven thousand Government of Guam employees, so when you divide a hundred-and-three-thousand by eleven thousand employees, that came out to nine dollars and forty-three cents per employee, and then when you divide it by twenty-six pay periods, that came out to thirty-six cents. So for us to be able to put our foster kids under the Governor of Guam Health Insurance Plan, uh, at full one-hundred percent cost based on the twenty thirteen numbers, we're just looking at thirty-six cents. Now, the way we drafted the bill is, we don't, even that thirty-six cents, as small as it is, we don't want to pass it on to the retirees, we don't want to pass it on to the employees, we want the government to absorb that full thirty-six cents, as low as it is. So, um, that's how we structured this piece of legislation, those are the reasons why we structured it that way. Uh, thirty-six cents for the Government of Guam to pay to, for a total of a hundred-and-three-thousand and seven-hundred-and-six dollars, uh, to get these kids onto a private health insurance? I mean, all of us would love to have our own children under private health insurance. I don't think anybody here in the room would rather say, "I want my child to go on Medicaid, not under private health insurance." And so this is our way of living up to that commitment for the most vulnerable children of our community, and, and foster children, when they go into the program, they, um, they don't go under the best of circumstances. You know, they had, they had abusive homes, or they, they had, um, loss of parents, and so, um, these children not only had a, a very disruptive, uh, home transition into the foster care program that our professionals have been able to manage as much as possible in trying to help these children, but they're also probably taken from their schools, you know, because when they become foster kids and they're under the care of a foster parent, they're probably going to a different school. I mean, they're going through so much change. At the very least, let's let them be able to see their doctor. You know, if they were seeing a certain doctor before, let's let them at least go back and see their same doctor, um, instead of having to go and see a, a stranger and, uh, of course, someone who's going to treat them very professionally, but, uh, th- these kids are going through a lot, and it's not going to cost a lot for us to be able to make sure we take care of them. And I think that, um, in moving this forward, I very much look forward to working with the, um, government and private sector professionals in the industry so that we can structure it in a way that's going to, uh, have the, um, most favorable outcome for the foster kids, for the Government of Guam, and for the, um, private companies that are, that are going to be, um, bidding on the Governor of Guam Health Insurance Plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, Mr. Gillen?
(laughing) Thank you very much. Uh, my name is James Gillen, I'm the Director of Public Health and Social Services. Um, forgive me, I thought this was being heard by Senator Sinekles' committee, so I'll, I'll redo the testimony just to reflect the addressee. Um, this is difficult for me because, um, I agree, uh, but I have, you know, to think about things like, where do we, where do we get the most, uh, effective use of dollars? Um, you know, uh, it's true, there's, there's a big bucket of money out there in, in Medicaid funding for, through the Affordable Care Act, but we still have to match it up, and we haven't been able to do that. So until we do, address that, you know, we can't really decide what we can give our children. Uh, the cost for one year was only a hundred-and-three thousand, but, you know, it, it only takes a few catastrophic cases, and some of, some of these are newborns who are kind of abandoned and, uh, generally have some other complications. We're going to be now required to start paying for, uh, mental health services, which we never did before, uh, and that's, that's a specific target group, children with, uh, either at risk or already identified as having no health problems. We don't even know what that cost is going to be. Uh, there's the issue too of dental coverage, you know, there is a limitation in, in the Governor of Guam Plan of a thousand dollars. Um, and under our program, CHIP, uh, it's, it's open-ended to the point where I'm very concerned about the charges, uh, but that's, that's for us to look into. Um, you know, when, the other part of this is, I, I, when you start to differentiate a group or segment a group out because of, of well-intentioned, uh, motivation, uh, what's to stop you from doing this for another group of people? And, and again, running it in on the government tab, which is, which is your prerogative, um, but it's, I think it's, it's kind of a dangerous thing. I, I think you're right. You, you, what you, you were doing was responding to s- our system problems and, and the way, our inability to pay promptly, so a lot of times physicians are not incentivized to stay with us. Um, we think though that we probably get, get a cheaper buy per unit of service than the insurance companies do it. I don't think they negotiate the same rates that, that we have. Uh, and so if it's a, a system problem, I can fix that. Okay? And we have two recently arrived family practitioners who are, are interested in, in opening up to Medicaid and, and MIP. Uh, we have a small group practicing in Timouni, which also, uh, wants to, wants to open up. So I think access m- might not be a problem. I think that the, the issue of seeing your own doctor, uh, it probably is, but in, you know, any government-funded program, you always have that, you know, not everybody's going to be on board. Um, so I, I'm in a position here of saying, yeah, I, I, I agree with your intent, okay, but I think practically, uh, and even legally, I don't know whether you can actually do this, you know, because this is the Governor of Guam employees, uh, and retirees plan. Uh, I guess you can negotiate anything or legislate or anything, but, uh, and if you do, I'm, I'm very happy to, to, to see those children taken care of. Um, y- I'm not sure that they'll be taken care of any, any better or worse, and I think you pointed that out, that they'll get the same, same quality of care. Uh, so I'm speaking, one, as a Director of Public Health and knows how to f- knows what needs to get fixed, but also as, as a, as a citizen saying, you know, how do you, how do you get this group into a government plan that's really not their plan? But, um, again, that's, that's your decision, but I agree with your, your motivation, and I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillen. Senator Santos?
Uh, thank you very much, Senators. I, I think I, um, I don't know if you remember, Senator, Senator, because we sat in your room and talked about this, um, it was former Lieutenant Governor and I, uh, Telaya Moilen, and I were meeting with him on another insurance issue, and he brought this up to us, and I said, "Look, it's, the, the vehicle is there, it's the how and, and how to accomplish it." Um, the, the, I'm going to call it a carve-out. What you want to do is carve out a plan out of your current, uh, Gov-Guam Health Insurance Program and try to figure out how to take care of these eighty-six kids that you have before us, uh, now that Jim Gillen has shared some cost factors with us, that, that obviously will give some comfort to the so-called carriers that are not participating. Uh, I think at issue is, what you're asking for, Senators, is buying access to a network. If you want to do it, the industry standard way is you basically self-insure your plan like you're currently doing now, which is what the government pays for, and you buy the network from whichever health plan wants to participate, and it's going to cost you, whether it's a per-dollar fee, per member, or, uh, you're asking on a claim basis, th- those arrangements can't be made. It, it's not a difficult thing to do. I, I did post some questions on more of the mechanics of a program and, and determining eligibility, uh, we know we'll get paid if it's Medicaid or whatever funding program you want to use, um, we can be creative, and if it's the, a TPA arrangement, then maybe you offset our GRT as opposed to using that to fund the program. If they're going to participate, uh, within the Medicaid programs, let's be creative and let the insurance companies come up with a, the forty-five cents, therefore giving you more money. Okay? So I believe just from a, a thinking outside the box, Senator Sinekles, that this is a step forward, uh, you're doing a, a, uh, it's a moral obligation, I believe, on our part, a- as part of the, uh, the mission of our thing is to provide healthcare also, not just to our paying members, but to the general public, because that's who we serve. Um, one of the things that, that I would like to add is that if you're looking at a carve-out program, then to think along those lines, then, you know, like what Jim was mentioning, deal strictly with one provider group. Uh, my friends behind me can be that one group if they so feel that these eighty-six kids can only go to their clinic, which is a full-service type clinic, they can certainly do it, there's other clinics capable of doing it, and by doing that methodology or that kind of model, you're going to control your costs tremendously if you do it within a close-network type concept. Um, the other one I threw into my little notes there is that if you're in need of off, off-island care, for example, limit it strictly to the Philippines, and, and not go beyond an area where there are more costs involved. Um, if there's only a hundred-and-three thousand, that seems to me like it's mostly doctor visits, little care, um, uh, Jim mentioned mental health, there is mental health parity now for all, you know, it's part of ACA, so that can of course be included in the plan design. This is not a mandated benefit, this is basically an entitlement, Senators, so plan design is, is critical. The, the, the more streamlined you make it, uh, then, you know, if you say no deductibles, no copayments, obviously that, that gets to be a little bit pricey, but if you try to not necessarily, uh, go along this, you can always, you know, have a fixed number of visits, uh, whether it be doctor visits, primary spec- tho- those are the, the little creative things you can do to do a plan design that will still meet the needs of what you're trying to achieve, but I think in the end, if we're trying to maximize, uh, access, adequate benefits, and pricing, y- you need to sit down and do all those components, because otherwise it's, it's, it's going to be pricey, um, as Jim noted, you, you don't include dental, you can include a dental package. And again, you know, the, the question is, is do you limit it? If you don't, then you need to pay for that also, and right now, you're paying, you know, fee for service at, um, whether it be public health or outside practitioners, but that's the price you pay for this type of system. But I believe if you talk to the providers and say, "We have a special needs type category, can we work, you know, with you on a, a pricing that, that, that will fit everybody's needs?" But I think I, um, applaud the author and of course the other Senators that jumped in and, um, uh, you know, let's, let's call this a pilot project. It, it can work, I mean, I know the mechanisms are there, it's, it's the getting the government and if you, you know, willing that they want to entertain the private health insurance to help, then I can say that Stewall and our carrier were ready to help.
Thank you, Si.
Oh, really, who can ask for more? I think it sounds great. I mean, again, this is a, an intent to kind of move the issue forward, but I'm not an insurance expert. You know, I, I did, I do have some, um, background in, uh, in banking and finance and investments, but of course, insurance is its own industry for a reason. And, um, what I'm trying to do is move forward an option here for us to be able to get these kids, uh, I mean, just an elevated, an elevated level of, uh, of total coverage here that we would all, we would all like to have for our, our kids if it was an option. Um, I, I, I do appreciate the work of public health, I think that they've been, they've been doing a great job, and CPS has been very responsive to, um, some of the stuff that we've been bringing up as well. So I know that Director Gillen will be, um, working very hard to make sure that we, we move this thing forward, uh, on the, on the public health side that's going to address those concerns. I just wanted to kind of reiterate, Mr. Chairman, just, um, the concern that I had with, with respect to what's happening in twenty nineteen, and, um, our spend rate right now on the Medicaid side versus what we're going to have available to us after twenty nineteen, assuming worst-case scenario, and how our spend rate right now on Medicaid, um, when you take out the Affordable Care Act money, Jim, is, uh, is, yeah, we're, we're overspending right on the, uh, on the Medicaid side. I, 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 I did not have my notes with me, I was trying to dig it up, but do you know what those numbers are? I, I think it was sixty-six million on Medicaid now, but when we take out the Affordable Care Act money, it's only going to be about twenty-two million.
It's just being limited to, to what's available under, uh, CHIP, uh, special, uh, set of sites for, uh, certain group of folks, the regular Medicare program, which is, yeah, about, uh, twenty-six million. Okay? Yeah, if, you know, but that's, that's the, it's almost the economics of healthcare, it'll spend up to the amount of money that you have available, so that's why we went from roughly about maybe thirty million to sixty million, because that Affordable Care Act money was there, uh, and we were able to find ways to, to match it up. And one of the ways we matched it up was there was a group of people who were being covered, covered by MIP, who got moved into the Medicare eligible group, so we used some of the savings from MIP to match up the Affordable Care Act money. But we need, if we want to take advantage of that Affordable Care Act money, you know, that's a two-way sword. You get used to eating steak every day, and then, then all of a sudden, we're back to beans and, and rice, and, uh, you know, I don't know what to do with that one, because I keep asking, you know, where do we go? And I'm, I'm glad that, that you asked the same question, because I think the assumption from a Washington standpoint is that there's either going to be a single payer or everybody's going to be covered somehow, some way, but we don't have the open-ended arrangements under Medicaid that most states have, and we don't have those arrangements for those special categories of people where they'll cover a hundred percent of the premium for three years, and then ninety, a hundred percent of the cost, and then ninety percent of it going forward. If we had that kind of arrangement, I mean, we have to come up now, we've got a special two percent, a little bit bumped in, in, in the federal match, so now we only have to come up with like, um, forty-three cents, something like that, to a dollar. Okay, but that's only, uh, that's two years, and then we go back to fifty-five, forty-five, and we're not, you know, we're not finding any more resources. The hospital is getting very good at their billing, they're very, they're very prompt, they're very on time, and, and they realize they need the, the, the cash flow from us, so they really, they really are aggressive. And the problem with that is because we all have cash flow problems, and, um, is that a lot of our private providers are kind of waiting on the sideline, and they're, they're kind of the last folks, and that's why one of the fallouts of, of that is the providers don't want to engage in the program. Uh, we've got to do something, um, you know, I, we have some ideas about, uh, trying to, trying to match up more federal dollars with, with the current dollars we have through, by calling them certified public expenditures, and I'd like to talk to them both about that later on, uh, whereby you would appropriate to us, uh, certain funds that you've been, uh, that you've been setting aside either for the hospital or for mental health, but if it comes to us to match up all the Medicaid, then we can match it up even higher. So, uh, there, there's some opportunities, but I, I, I do, like you, worry about twenty nineteen, you know, where are we at? And the feds don't, don't have an answer right now. I really do think they think everybody's going to either have Obamacare or, or Medicaid, but we have a different picture here, and we don't, we know, we've been talking about how the, how the private insurers are even going to deal with the Affordable Care Act requirements, it's, 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 uh, it's crazy. And I'm, I'm glad you, you both agree with this.
Yeah, and the Chairman, the Chairman's been doing a really good job. Every single time we sit down, he always says, "How can we get more matching funds for Medicare and Medicaid?" So he's, he's definitely on top, and that's one of the reasons why we're getting that, that, that very elevated, um, cash flow from the Medicaid, um, Medicaid side of the house. But like you said, you know, if that money just goes away in twenty nineteen, where are we going to be? And I don't want the foster kids, you know, to be part of a, I mean, they, they will be if we don't figure out a different, a different mechanism, they will be a part of that greater question of how are we going to go from sixty-six million spend to twenty-six million spend? You know, where are we going to find that other forty million dollars? Um, and so right now, at least of these kids, we're talking about a hundred-and-three-thousand at thirty-six cents, if we go to forty-five cents, we're looking at maybe what, a hundred-and-fifty? So let's, uh, let's see where we, where we can go from here, but I very much look forward to extending the dialogue with the professionals on the government and the private side, and seeing where, what we can do for the kids, these eighty-six. And then from there, our work of the Chairman, we'll see what we can, we can do about the other stuff going forward.
Yeah, I, I do want to say that, um, Public Health and Social Services doesn't have, uh, any, any agenda about Medicaid or MIP. If, if we can do this through a managed care arrangement, we can do this through any, any other way that would, uh, be more effective and efficient, we'd be happy to let it go. Uh, you know, we have a lot of other regulatory and educational kinds of things that we need to be doing, and wherever the private sector can, can, can deal with this, I'd be happy to let it go. I do not believe at this time, though, when I look at what my general administrative expenses are against, you know, the payout, we're only, just the payout, we're only just a little bit above two percent. I don't know if anybody can do that. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Um, both of you, also, Senator Sinekles, but, you know, the, one suggestion to you, you raise, Senator Santos, about, um, perhaps looking at this as a separate, um, as a separate plan. You know, it's something I think we, we need to explore more, because if, if you, if you, see, if you look at the-
We're talking about the group health insurance plan? You have to.
Yeah.
Um, you, you've got to carve it out. You, we've got to look at this as a separate type program on a pilot project basis. I mean, uh, what you're asking for is a network of, of access. That can be done outside the scope of our current contract. Um, I don't think it was your intent to, to kind of say, "You need this type of health plan for eighty-six people." Uh, just the mere fact that you're saying no deductibles and no copayments, that already, you know, is telling us that you com- you need a different type of health, uh, insurance program just for these eighty-six, that's fine. So the best method to move this, or the, the better approach is to carve out the program away from Gov Guam, but just ask, you're basically asking the health insurance providers, who are part of this program, "Help us find a access portal for these eighty-six." And, and I think, you know, I mean, I'm not sure about my friends behind here, but, um, Staywall i- is willing to work out some kind of arrangement to make that work, because it's, like I said earlier, I, I think just from the, the, the need side, Senator Sinekles, I recognize that. I mean, they're already at-risk kids, and, and all you're asking for is, is for them to see, whether it be their own doctor or just the doctor. Um, you know, that, I think we can make available, the, the, the details are more for us to handle with whoever it's going to be, whether it be Jim, or, actually, I think it should be, still be him, but, um, um, it can't be DOA, for example, because that's not their expertise. We need to deal with pe- his agency, who still handles the, the core mission of, of, uh, taking care of these kids. Uh, one of the questions, I think, just from a general standpoint, is, you know, after you identify the eighty-six kids, is that it? What, what happens to us midstream? Are we, are we told we've got to su- cover another kid, uh, during the middle of the year, or? See, all those little, uh, little things do matter to us as to how eligibility and enrollment is going to be handled. And, you know, taking kids midstream, uh, that, that can be problematic at times. And, uh, especially if we do a close network.
That's right.
If we tell you to go only one clinic, you know, it's going to be-
That's right. And maybe, Jim, if you can get that prepared to give us a sense of how do these things work? You know, um, give us a yearly, but also a monthly, because, you know, things change. You know, and eighty-six can be on today, um, next month, you can have, um, eighty-four, or ninety. So we need that type of information.
We can do some trending over time, to see how many children we've had in the system. Um, but you never really get it completely right.
Sure.
Okay, because you only need one catastrophic again. Uh, and that's where, you know, insurers have to take that risk. Um, uh, and, and it, I, I would assume that you could treat it just like you would the government of Guam program. A new kid comes on, it's, it's just like an open enrollment.
Uh-huh.
Okay, but again, Francis is right. These are small numbers, and I don't think they get much larger over time. Let's hope not. Um, because that's just a, another indictment of what's going on in our society. Um, we can work, we can work some things out about how you determine eligibility, whether there's going to be a premium, a, a bonus on the premium because of, you know, mid-year entry or something like that.
Uh-huh.
There, there's, there's all kinds of ways to work it, but ultimately, they still, you know, they want to, they need pretty good numbers so they can assess whether they're riskless.
Yeah, I, I believe, too, Senators, you know, we're going to follow, I, I don't, I'm not sure which plan design you want to use. Are we still going to follow Medicaid, for example, or do you want us to develop a, a, a type of program specifically for the needs of these kids? And, uh, can I say, you say there was no off-island care on this? At a hundred and three thousand? All of the numbers. Yeah, see, so, I mean, the numbers are low now. We may have a bad year next year, a year in the next.
Sure.
That's why you say you carve it out away from the group health, and we can come back to you and say, "Great idea, but it didn't work this much. We're willing to do our side." And, you know, let's, let's work out the, uh, whether the, an offset or something. You're, like I said, you're asking for access for these kids. It, it can be done, and I think from a carrier standpoint and, and a health plan standpoint, it's, it's, the details of what, how we do it is how we can work together to partner with you on this.
Great. Okay, so we'll, we'll work closely with you and the author, um, to move this forward. Um, again, I want to thank you for, for being here. Um, no other individuals have signed up to testify. However, we'll keep the record open, and so, uh, we can receive, uh, written testimonies on this and also on, um, Bill two ninety-nine. So it's now ten thirty-nine. This public hearing's adjourned. The committee will reconvene at three P.M. today for, uh, informational briefing on Project Carini. Um, Mr. Gillen?
Just wanted to, uh, congratulate you on your C-Change Award.
Oh, great, thank you.
Really, you know, everybody else did already, so I came late, but anyway, uh, I appreciate it.
No, I, I thank you, and I tell you, no, it's, it's really, it's the, it's the team.
The Cancer Coalition.
The Cancer Coalition folks, the government and, and non-government, um, individuals who put, I tell you, they're the ones who inspire me. They put so much in, and so they need to be congratulated. And so this, this award is, is for them, definitely.
They'll get it done without your support, though.
Definitely. Thank you so much, Mr. Gillen. Thank you.